We'll call the Willmar City Council meeting for November 6th to order. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmas.
Here.
Meske.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledged allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Mr. Holland.
Mayor and council, I make the request that number eight on our work session, the K-9 unit addition proposal presented on behalf by the Police Department and Chief Felton be added to the regular agenda due to time constraints with this possibility of adding another K-9 to the Police Department.
Anything else from the council? Seen in hearing, none. Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to amend the agenda as presented. Discussion. Roll. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consent items. Our city clerk, Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, it includes the approval of the City Council minutes of October 16th, Willmar Municipal Utilities minutes of October 23rd, Rice Hospital Board minutes of October 25th, the Council Labor Relations Committee minutes of October 26th, Rice Memorial Hospital Board minutes of October 30th, the appointment of Erlene Schulsted to the Police Commission, Planning Commission minutes of October 18th, a resolution deferring special assessments for senior citizens, disabled, or active military, a resolution approving change order number one for East Airport Taxi Lane Rehabilitation Project, resolution approving purchase of a parallelogram lift for the Public Works Garage, application for exempt permit by the Pheasants Forever Canoe High County number two, and to accept the Willmar Lakes Area Convention Visitors Bureau Board minutes of September 19th, Human Rights Commission minutes of September 19th, Airport Commission minutes of October 25th, the Willmar Community Ed and Rec Joint Powers Board minutes of October 27th, and the Accounts Payable Report through October 31st, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve consent items. Discussion. Councilmember Meske.
Just to point an order on items H, I, and J, as those are resolutions, is it customary to put those in consent agenda?
Yeah, we're putting them on consent agenda, and that's why we do the roll call for the consent agenda items. We can certainly pull them and discuss them if you wish.
Well, just, you know, I know they're on there, and we've put those forward, but because they do have those monies tied to them, and perhaps people that wouldn't see this would know that, it might be worth pulling off just to do a roll call vote on those.
Certainly.
If that is the case, I would pull H, I, and J.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? With the exception of items H, I, and J, is there a roll call?
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And then we'll start with item H. Councilmember Meske.
Just like to just, we could go through the quick history of those, and then I would propose the approval after that.
Our city clerk, Ms. Thompson.
Item number H is a resolution deferring special assessments for senior citizens, disabled, or active military pursuant to Willmar Municipal Code, Chapter 5, Article 5, the special assessments in the city comprehensive assessment policy, which offers the option to defer special assessments to senior citizens, disabled, or active military deferrals meeting certain income guidelines. This year's project, the 2017 Street and Other Improvements, received one qualifying application, and it's our recommendation that the council adopt the resolution deferring the special assessments.
I'd introduce that resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a resolution deferring special assessments for a senior citizen, disabled, or active military. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I just thought we should maybe notify the public that the financial impact of this is $4,600, and it's for one person, correct?
Correct.
Correct, one person. Right.
Thank you.
Other discussion? I'm sorry, I didn't see you over there. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Next, we have a resolution approving change order number one for the East Airport Taxi Lane Rehabilitation Project. Councilmember Meske.
Again, I was just looking at a history of these, and I will introduce an approval after we just hear about the particular piece. I'm not opposed, again, to any of these resolutions, I just think that outlay of money is worth mentioning.
Certainly. City Clerk Thompson.
The change order, I would revert that to Bruce Peterson.
Oh, I didn't see him back there.
Development Director.
Mr. Peterson, you must have snuck in late. Well, you were before me, though.
Well, yeah, I made it for the council meeting, not for the work session. What was the specific question about the change order?
Just that there was a dollar amount involved, and just to identify the dollar amount involved and make the public aware of the fact of the financial transaction.
Yeah, the dollar amount of the change order was $7,782, of which 5% of that is local funds. The balance of that comes from our federal and state grants through MINDOT and the FAA, and that was for some additional drainage improvements along a portion of the east taxi lane.
Thank you.
I'd introduce that resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Next is item number J, which is a resolution approving the purchase of a parallelogram lift for a public works garage. Our city Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Councilmember Meske, this one is a capital project that was approved a year ago, or better than a year ago, for $130,000 budgeted for this item. This lift, total cost is $119,551.78, so $119,551.78, and then we've added $5,500 for some concrete work to be done in accordance with this particular project and around the base of this lift. So those two together are well within that $130,000 budget.
I'd say I appreciate the $5,000 of savings, too, so thank you. I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a resolution approving the purchase of a parallelogram lift to a public works garage and a change order to do some concrete work. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen. Aye. Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes as well. Next, we'll go to our first public hearing. It's an ordinance amending City Charter, Section 7.05, the recall section. Mr. Scott, do you want to introduce this, or do you want to go straight to Mr. Halliday?
Mayor, members of the council, this is an ordinance that is recommended to the City Council by the Charter Commission. This ordinance would amend the charter if it's passed. I will let Mr. Halliday speak to the details of it, but I will note for the public that this is the one process by which there is the potential to amend the charter without there being an election of the voters of the city. If the commission recommends an ordinance to the City Council, and the City Council thereafter votes unanimously to pass the Charter Amendment ordinance, the ordinance will take effect, subject to a 90-day waiting period through which the public could petition for reverse referendum on that ordinance. But if there's no petition, the ordinance would take effect 90 days after the council votes. After this public hearing, the council must hold a vote on the ordinance within one month. It certainly could tonight, since you're all here, but you do have one month under statute to take the vote.
Thank you. Mr. Halliday, thank you for serving on the Charter Commission. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kevin Halliday, current chairman of the Willmar Charter Commission. And on behalf of the commission, we are here tonight with this three-page amending ordinance with a lot of heretofores and whereases. There's generally just two significant changes here that we are recommending to you. The first change is the time period where the city attorney would react to a recalls committee 250-word statement regarding who they are going to attempt to recall, which elected official, and why. Current ordinance has that activity of the city attorney after the recall committee spends up to its 90 days to solicit all the signatures required at that time. The commission believes that once a recall measure is put forward to the city clerk, and the recall members and circulators are certified by the city clerk as legitimate, that that presentation of that petition goes directly to the city attorney. The city attorney would have the same timeframe that's in law now, which is 14 days, to make a decision on legality of the statements and in that petition. That, we think, will speed up the process by simply stopping any petition that doesn't meet the proper threshold and move the matter to a faster conclusion if need be. The second significant item is the possibility that circulators of the petition could start before time, before everything was certified by the city clerk that they were qualified voters in this city. In order to combat that, we have language in here, as proposed, that the city clerk's signature and date will be on the front and the back of the original petition, and then all the copies of that petition would come forth at the end of the required 90-day period. The city clerk can verify that that's a proper petition that was submitted to the citizens that wanted to sign it after everything had been properly certified and the city attorney had ruled. So with those two items, and the help of the city attorney, we end up having a three-page amending ordinance. But on behalf of the commission, we recommend that after subsequent to taking testimony at the hearing, that you approve this unanimously, both for the benefit of our citizens and for the benefit of the elected officials who may be involved. That's all I have to say right now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there other members of your commission that are here?
Yes, sir, we have Pat, Duane, and Kelly, I believe, without looking anybody.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. Thank you all for serving. Appreciate that. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Seen in hearing, none, I'll bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
The motion dies for a lack of a second. Next is city ordinance amending.
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I have a lot of admiration for forefathers, that of our country, of our state, county, and city. I'm not sure what they were thinking when they put this part of the charter in, having gone through this recall. Does anybody on the Charter Commission have an answer as to why it was written the way it was originally? And the changes that were made, that are suggested to be made, I think they need to be made, there's no doubt about it. That's I'm surprised nobody seconded this. Not one of these elected officials up here, I think, want to go through what happened the last time. Is it a consensus in that you don't want to change the charter? I'm asking.
Well, I believe that the council's going to have an opportunity to vote, I believe. I mean, it's a...
Isn't that what Mr. Fagerly, why he recommended it? Introduce the motion.
Well, I thought it was a travesty what happened earlier, last year, to you. People serving on the Charter Commission, some are former council members, one's a former city clerk. They should know what they're doing, and this makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me, too.
Councilmember Meske.
As a former charter member and chair, I can tell you, we wrestled with this actually during the throes of the recall and tried to correct it, if you will. I would say, for the most part, I think this is very good. The one lingering question for me is, in Section 705.3, the last sentence is one that I have questions about, which basically puts the entire onus of declaring whether or not a recall measure is valid into the hands of the city attorney and the city attorney alone. And I don't know if that is putting too much authority into the city attorney's hands. And I see the same appeal exists that was always in place, that you can go to the District Court of Appeals, I get that. I'm questioning the validity of having one person in charge of that. You know, if you put together a charter, or if a person went with a recall, if they were to seek out any opinion of attorney, because I happen to know that opinions of attorneys will vary often, it would be nice if the community could also find an attorney that would sign off and say it is also valid, instead of having just one avenue to do so. And that would be the only concern I have with the entire proposal here, is it feels to me that there's a major shift of power to just to the city attorney. Not that the city attorney will not render an opinion that's correct, but that is a non-elected person that would be doing that when you have citizens that are bringing forth a recall. So that's the only point that I have exception with.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Councilmember Meske, for your comments, because I got quite a number of letters, and emails, and telephone calls about this exact matter, and the reoccurring theme was that we are putting the decision, the power, the voice is given to one individual, that being the city attorney, who is selected by the council, who represents the council, and that person has the sole ability to silence the voice of all of the other members of the community in their desire for that effort. And so I cannot support it because of that reason. I would also note that this language is very close to that for county recalls according to the state statute.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only judgment, judging done by any attorney, city attorney, is malfeasance and nonfeasance. And there are cases, historical cases, that determine whether or not that has occurred. And Mr. Scott did his due diligence and researched that, and I think it's fine for the city attorney. You could have any attorney research it, but I mean, he does work for us, and I don't think you're quieting community members because he's the one making the judgment. I mean, he can't do it from a, he's got to be a completely third party. He can't do it because, well, he knows the guy being recalled, or the gal being recalled, or he has to do it as a third party, and I believe he did that this pastime, because malfeasance and nonfeasance are defined. They're definitely defined, and he has to judge on those two, whether that happened, that occurred. And it's really, if you looked at the history of recall within the state of Minnesota, it's really tough. It's really, really hard to recall somebody. I mean, they could have done a criminal act and still not be recalled in some cases.
Yeah.
Other states, it's a bit different. Wisconsin, I guess it's easy to recall somebody, you just have a reason, and you put them up. But it's, I think it's a travesty to not make this change. I mean, what happened in this last recall, you all have no idea how it affected me, my family, my business, my friends, my church. It's terrible. It's absolutely terrible. And to not support these changes, you're, we're going backwards. We're going back to the Dark Ages, where you can lambast somebody and bastardize them publicly for a period of three to six months and get away with it. My personal feeling is there was a lot of maliciousness that was done. I didn't, well, we need to change the charter, so this doesn't happen to somebody else, folks. What else can I say? I mean, it was a pretty sad day in my life.
Mr. Walsh.
Kelly Welch, 1304 West, East 23rd Street, member of the Charter Commission. We haven't changed a thing. As far as the power of being given to the city attorney is concerned, he's always had that power, but it was later on in this particular section. It's the same power that he had in the original version. What we did change with respect to the city attorney and the city clerk was in the first section, when the petition was there, the city clerk was the sole person that was going to make a decision whether they should go ahead or not. Joe Thompson, in his expertise, said that the only person qualified and with any background or knowledge of what's happening in the arena of recalls in the courts would be the city attorney. So we should split that. The city attorney should still deal with the petition, and that part of it, pardon me, the city clerk should still deal with the petition, and that part of it, we took the city attorney and gave him the responsibility of dealing with the malfeasance or nonfeasance. So the city clerk is not an expertise in law and what's going on in the courtrooms around the state of Minnesota as far as recall situations are concerned. The expert in that, as close as we can get, under our own employ, is the city attorney. So we took that part away from the city clerk. You'll notice it if you read the original version, the city clerk had the sole responsibility of deciding all of that upfront and saying, yeah, go ahead. Now we have the city attorney coming from the back of this process to the front of the process and saying, he's reviewing it with his knowledge. So we put the city clerk knowledgeable, that knowledge, to work at the petition itself and the organization and the voter registration. That's where that person's knowledge is. We put the city attorney to work on the, is it plus or minus valid or invalid? Is it true? And that's the change we made, plus we put it in the front rather than the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meske, I'm sorry, Councilmember Plowman, followed by Meske.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I think it's important that we consider for a second the role of our city attorney, and I'd like to maybe get a couple comments from him in terms of whom he represents, whether or not he represents the council, whether or not he represents the citizens, whether or not he represents the city of Willmar. Could we have a formal explanation for the public of who you represent?
Mr. Scott.
Certainly. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Plowman, my client is the municipal corporation of the city of Willmar. That means about 99% of the time, it's the city council, because the city council acts for the municipal corporation. There are, as this is one example, certain situations where the charter would assign an official function to the city attorney, which is really a way for a legal process to unfold, and having a protection built in to make sure that it is in fact legal. So in this case, my obligation would be to the municipal corporation to perform the official function assigned to me in the charter. Does that answer your question?
In formal manner, yes. Thank you.
I think that's what we're talking. Councilmember Meske.
And again, I knew that the, we would try to circle, and this is what we tried to avoid when I was on the Charter Commission as well, is we tried to avoid the mistakes, if you will, that happened in the last recall measure. And we keep using that as a litmus test, and I don't know if that's a fair thing to do, because when you're putting a charter, you are not usually making reactionary kinds of things. There are supposed to be things that are rules that should govern, and as you said, Councilmember Christensen, they sort of are the rules that governed our forefathers put it together. And again, I am very comfortable with 98% of this. It's just the one piece that if you are putting a recall together, and you realize you have a legal obligation to make sure that you have some type of malfeasance that can be presented in court, I don't know why you necessarily have to use the city attorney if you could secure another attorney. I know that he's working for the city, but if the recall has another avenue, why would they not be able to use that? Is my question. And I know, perhaps there's no one to answer it, but...
I believe what's been recommended to us is the city attorney.
I know.
You certainly could recommend that, to go back to the Charter Commission, and if they could amend that, they would certainly be able to come back with that. But what's in front of us right now is that it would go to the city attorney.
I mean, I understand that last time, what happened was, the city attorney was used just to make sure that the original interpretation was that the form was actually legal, which was frankly not much, and there was nothing listed on the original piece of the charges that were there. It would have changed completely had they actually been written on there, that is for sure, but just because it's written by and approved by another legal entity, I don't think would make it less valid, and it still gets to the point where you can't just put a blank piece out there and start collecting signatures, and I totally understand that. And unfortunately, we have a test that was already done of this that is guiding some of this, and I want to make sure that what we're doing is putting together a measure that actually addresses all future recalls and these measures, instead of being a reactionary piece.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my understanding that Mr. Scott represents the council, that's who you work for. Am I part of the council, and would you represent me?
Mayor, members of the council, I would not represent any individual council member. I represent the body.
Okay. But you do make the determination whether or not it's malfeasance or nonfeasance.
Correct.
Correct. So in essence, you're saying whether or not the recall person is guilty or not guilty.
Correct. It's offering a legal opinion on the recall measure, whether it is compliant with the state constitution and court precedent.
Right. One other question maybe for Mr. Halliday is, what was the vote on the Charter Commission to bring this forward?
Mr. Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Christian, the vote was unanimous. In our opinion, the city attorney rests with the sole decision, as you remember in the recall, whether you vote yes or you vote no on this amendment. The current language also has the city attorney making the sole decision on its legality only as... making the sole decision on its legality only after our citizens do ninety days worth of work. We don't think that's prudent.
So the Charter Commission voted unanimous to bring this forward. Um, we have appointed the Charter Commission. They are us, and I think we need to respect that unanimous vote. Um, again, I mean, if these present councilmembers want to have the, uh, should I say, uh, go through something what I went through or have that even happen, then you vote this down, I guess. I mean, and it may happen. Who knows? Um, but it's, it's ugly. It's an ugly process, what we have presently. And, uh, I, I say we unanimously, unanimously approve this to not put any future council people through what happened to this last recall. Folks, it was terrible. I think everybody up here will agree with that. I'm not mentioning names, but it was terrible what happened to me. Man, I was, man, I felt like crawling under a rock. The newspaper, the radio station, uh, current councilmembers, I mean, um, my wife and I went through some very trying times, and I don't want to see anybody else up here go through what we went through. It was, it was, it was pretty ugly. It affected every aspect of my life. Every freaking aspect was affected. I don't want to see anybody go through that. They shouldn't have to. But by voting no on this, you're, you're leaving that possibility out. It's, it's there. Um, so I encourage you to vote yes, make this unanimous. Unless you want a week to, two weeks to think about it, uh, it's a no-brainer to me and Rick.
Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
No.
Mesky?
No.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
No.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
No.
Alvarado?
No.
Three ayes, five nays.
Uh, resolution fails. Next is an ordinance amending chapter seventeen of the surface water management and repealing ordinance number twelve twenty-seven. Charter Commission, thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, before you, you have a draft ordinance that updates the city's stormwater management ordinance. Um, it will repeal your existing ordinance number twelve twenty-seven, which is somewhat outdated and which the MPCA has found not to be compliant with the MS four permit. It will, uh, add new articles into chapter nine, excuse me, into chapter seventeen, uh, with your other stormwater ordinance regulations. So they will all be in one chapter in your municipal code. The ordinance before you, um, is a set of extensive technical regulations. They will apply to all construction activity in the city that disturbs one acre or more of land and impose requirements on such construction activity that includes submitting a stormwater management plan for erosion and sediment control at construction sites in the city. Um, prior to the start of construction, establishes procedures for the city conducting site inspections and enforcement, um, requiring contractors and project owners to institute best management practices to reduce stormwater runoff during construction, and establishes post-construction performance standards that will permanently control stormwater management. Um, since it was introduced, uh, city staff sent this ordinance to the MPCA for review just to make sure that it's compliant. Uh, MPCA did respond. They said in general, uh, it covers everything we need to, but they identified two changes that need to be made by the council prior to formal adoption today. And I've summarized those two changes in a memorandum in your materials. The first is to section seventeen dash nine of the ordinance, which would remove an exception for when a stormwater management plan would not be required. So it removes the exception that it would not be required when there is no net increase in impervious area. Uh, MPCA said that was not actually compliant with the stormwater permit. Uh, and then similarly, in section seventeen dash sixteen, paragraph C three F, deleting the last clause, which allowed for, uh, uh, an infiltration practice, uh, for runoff from fueling and vehicle maintenance areas that could be more lenient when spill containment was included. The MPCA said that last exception is not compliant with the MS four permit. So, um, the recommendation would be that you make those two amendments. They are, in the context of this, uh, lengthy set of technical regulations, non-substantive, meaning you can make that change today, um, before final adoption, and you don't have to republish and come back, uh, for another hearing. I would also just point out that I also included in your materials a markup of what chapter seventeen will look like, assuming this ordinance passes. Um, and I included in the markup references in each point where some place in the ordinance is satisfying the requirement of either the MS four permit or the general MPBS construction permit that's required. Um, just so you can see that the city is only implementing the regulations that is required to implement by the MPCA. So with that explanation, the recommended action for the council is to first, um, vote to amend the ordinance to make the two ordinances, or excuse me, the two amendments I referenced to section seventeen dash nine and seventeen dash sixteen. Then once those amendments are made, to, uh, adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and to publish it. And then in a twist, we're going to recommend that the council authorize publication by summary. You have a example of what the summary will look like. Uh, the summary makes clear that if anyone wants to see the full ordinance, uh, it will be made available at no cost to them by the city clerk.
Thank you. Any members of the public that wish to speak to this matter in the public hearing? Seeing in hearing done, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council. Council, what are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to, uh, adopt or...
amend the ordinance?
Move to amend the two amendments to the ordinance as stated.
Second.
Also made and seconded to, um, make the two amendments to the ordinance as identified by Mr. Scott. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That, um, resolution passes. Next is a motion to adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it.
So moved.
Second.
Also made and seconded to adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes as well. Next on the agenda, we have the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. We have four individuals who have signed up. The first person is Merrily Dorn. And just so that you're aware, Ms. Dorn, that we do have a three-minute limit, and then the timer will sound at that three minutes, so don't be alarmed by that. And thank you for being here.
I would like to speak to Agenda Item thirteen, Employee Healthcare Plans. As retired city of Wilmer employee, I'm covered with my children under my also-retired ex-husband's Blue Cross Blue Shield Minnesota policy per court order under child support. I learned through the grapevine over the weekend of the city administrator's recommendation to change insurance policies and tonight's proposed vote for the council. I studied the materials from your packets, as I found them online, and tried to get some answers to questions that they raised, but I did not get a return call, so I'm here with my questions. I believe that voting for that recommended change, moving to the PEIP healthcare savings through Flexible Benefit Consulting Incorporated is premature and ill-advised. There are too many questions and the timeline too short for the major change that this makes to the families affected. Some of the questions, will retired city employees who currently are covered by Blue Cross Blue Shield policies be allowed to continue coverage? I don't know how many we number, but if we were hired before nineteen eighty-six, we are not eligible for Medicare. I'm currently working three different jobs through the year to become eligible for Medicare, and I'm not eligible for healthcare coverage at any of those jobs. On the page labeled two thousand eighteen PEIP funding model, there is a column labeled HSA VIBA funding. Would Flexible Benefit Services Plan be a VIBA, available only to current employees and administered through that company? Or is it an allowance, uh, through an independent HSA that we could use, for instance, through a local bank or credit union? For current employees, is that available January first or only as the funds go in throughout the year? While you have shown level two costs in the breakdown, once the merger action of ACMC and Rice Hospital with Centra Care is complete, uh, they become cost level three providers. Family Practice Medical Center is already a level three as in Centra Care. I don't know what EEI or EE and family means, so that means I'm looking at eight thousand dollars, January first, for out-of-pocket expenses. Where are we supposed to come up with that in the next fifty-five days? My son is presently doing physical therapy to try to avoid knee surgery, and the decision on that surgery can't be made until mid-December. On the page titled Health Insurance Premium Rate Analysis, the figures for the Southwest West Central Cooperative Alternative are different from those shown on other pages. The column for PEIP's bottom line does not include the projected HSA funds that would be provided by the city as shown on the, um, planned funding model page and your cover page. The analysis you see includes the premium cost, but we need the breakdown of what things are covered under the other alternative plans, like how much for an injury illness office visit, uh, for each PT or OT rehab, for chiropractic treatment, for prescriptions. Are there prescription exceptions? I realize the health insurance market is volatile, both federal and state, but I would urge you to not adopt the, uh, the plan that was just proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next, I have Mr. Michael, or Michelle McCleary, I believe it is. I apologize for that. I thought it was Michael. Thank you for being here, Michelle.
Um, nurses are encouraged that our efforts to make sure the new entity, Carius Health, retains our high standard of patient care and keeps our community strong are making progress. The plan released last week does address nurses' issues, and we are encouraged that our voices are being heard. However, many questions remain, and we ask the city council ensure all questions are answered and the consolidation will be a success. As we discussed, we urge that the council seek several things before voting to approve this agreement. One, more specific clarity to protect high-quality services in Wilmer. Two, stronger language concerning collective bargaining agreements. And three, a letter of understanding from Centra Care guaranteeing staff receive retirement plans as promised. We are grateful to hear that there will be a public hearing for the public weigh-in. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, for your comments. Next, Blake Graves.
Blake Graves, thank you for having me here today. Um, I'm here in regards to item number eighteen on the agenda today for the Tiff District. Um, I'm going to keep this short and sweet, as we know that we have a long agenda for today. Uh, want to let you know that I will be in the audience tonight, so if there is any questions that come up in regards to that. I know that this has been a big subject for not only the city, but for, uh, the council members and the mayor, so I want to make sure that we address those in the appropriate way. Um, I know that I've spoke to many citizens in the city over the past couple days and weeks, and along with many of you. Uh, so if there is anything that comes up in that time, I'd be happy to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thanks for your comments. Mr. James Tooms. Now, on this one, you have three minutes.
Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, thank you for bearing with me during the work session. I know my, uh, words were stumbling. Now, um, I get a little more time to just, uh, basically, I want to echo what Michelle says and what I said earlier. Um, I really believe that, um, we can come together and, and really support this merger. Um, I feel like this is a good thing overall. We're missing that transparency piece. Even though we're being said that everything is transparent, there is still a lot of opaqueness to this Rice ACMC Centra Care merger, Carius Health. Um, I would recommend that we get all of these squared away before we make a final approval. And, um, I, I understand that this is a slow freight train, and it's, and it's got a lot of inertia behind it, um, including the paper and everything, and everything else. We need to make sure that all of the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have a consideration of a small cities grant for the city of Wilmer. Uh, we had this moved forward from our work session due to the timing of the issue. And so on that, I will call on Jill Bengston to give a brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Also with me this evening is Rick Goodman from the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership, as he would be benefiting from the program by receiving funds for rental rehab dollars if the, if the council so chooses to submit the pre-application. Um, we went through this at the workforce session, so I'll just quickly go through a couple slides here. Summary, where the HRA is requesting that the, uh, city council approve a submission of a Small Cities Development Program application. The Candyoy County HRA would be the administrator of the program. The city is actually the applicant and the grantee. Um, how the program funds would be used, two hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars would be used to rehab thirteen commercial buildings in the downtown area, two hundred eighty-six thousand to rehab thirteen homes in a target area on the north side of Wilmer, six hundred thousand would be used to rehab the fifty-six unit Hanson apartment project located on Lakeland Drive, and seventy-four thousand three hundred eight for HRA administration costs. Um, the next page again is the funding. So commercial, thirteen businesses, homeowner rehab, thirteen homes, rental rehab, fifteen, fifty-six units and four buildings, so a total rehab project of eighty-two units and thirty buildings. And again, the total request is one million two hundred fourteen thousand one hundred forty-five dollars. There's also an additional hundred seventy-five thousand one hundred sixty-three of revolving funds that have come back into the city that will be used for business rehab. Um, you could, so with rehab dollars, you, you do, you can use the funds for energy improvements, um, roof replacement, safety issues, uh, insulation, handicap accessibility kinds of things. Um, the next slide is showing where the homeowner target area is. So it's up to Park Avenue, down to the railroad tracks, um, just past Seventh Street, northeast to the east, where you see Ella Avenue there, and to the west is over on Seventeenth Street. Uh, on that chart is then showing the income levels for the project. If you are in level one, the lowest income category for each family size, you can receive up to a hundred percent of your rehab costs through the Small Cities Development Program, up to a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars, which means, um, if you receive a twenty-five thousand dollar loan and you live in the house for ten years and you do not sell it or transfer title or move out, you do not have to repay the loan. If you do, the entire loan must be repaid if you move out during, during that first ten years. The next slide is showing the business commercial target area. This would be Pacific Avenue on the north, First Street on the east, Trot Avenue on the south, and Seventh Street on the west. Um, business owners here would receive up to sixty percent of their rehab expenses through small cities with to a maximum of forty thousand dollars. And as long as they have the business for seven years, they don't have to repay it. If they do, um, transfer title or sell the property before that, have to repay the entire amount. And then finally, the rental rehab portion, this would be a six hundred thousand dollar loan for thirty years to the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership that is looking to acquire and rehab Hanson apartments on Lakeland Avenue. with to a maximum of $40,000, and as long as they have the business for seven years, they don't have to repay it. If they do transfer title or sell the property before that, have to repay the entire amount. And then finally, the rental rehab portion. This would be a $600,000 loan for 30 years to the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership that is looking to acquire and rehab Hanson Apartments on Lakeland Avenue. It's a 56-unit project. I won't speak anymore about that if there's questions for Rick, but that would be, so the project would have to meet the requirements of the Small Cities Program for 30 years. Your most previous Small Cities Award was in 2012. $1,48,000 was for 27 homeowners, two rental projects, nine businesses, and Highland Apartments. And that is all. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, the recommended action is to allow the HRA to submit, I'm sorry, the city to submit an application for $1,214,145, $145 to Small Cities Development Program, pre-application, signed by the mayor, to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for commercial homeowner and rental rehab activities.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor. Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Schwantus, followed by Christensen.
Thank you. Ms. Bengston, thank you for your presentation. I think this is an exciting project. I love all three parts of it: the commercial part, the homeownership, and the renovation of the apartments. I think that they are all needed, and I really appreciate the fact that those individuals that are losing their district heat have an opportunity to be able to access this, to work through that. I'd also like to thank Mr. Goodman for being here tonight. I had the privilege of working with him on another project when I was with the Economic Development Commission, and your expertise are respected and appreciated, and it's good to have you back in the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also think this is a good program. Thanks for bringing it to us, Jill. Just a couple of questions. The purchase of the Hanson Apartments, is that done, or is there a contingency here for that $600,000?
Councilmember Christensen, can I defer that question to Rick?
Sure. Sure.
Mr. Goodman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Christensen. The award has been submitted to, or has been, deed has approved the funding, but the city council and the city of Wilmer would have to submit the application for it to be finalized.
So, it has been approved?
It has been approved, as far as award of funds, to the Hanson Apartments, to Minnesota Housing Finance Agency from deed. However, the city council still has to approve the application for the project, so contingent, it is a contingent upon your approval, and the application being submitted.
Okay, I don't think that's a problem. Is there an amount of money for the Hanson Apartments, too?
It's all going to the Hanson Apartments. So, the funding was presented by Jill, and that all has been approved for the project.
Okay. Then, one other question. The, I know timing is of the essence here, because you have to have it in by November...
9th.
Three days.
Yes.
Okay. That answers my questions, then. Thank you.
And we were unaware of this.
I know.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Goodman, will HRA manage the facility, or will the, I think there's a firm from Monty that's doing it now?
The current management company will continue management.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Yeah, Jill, I was just wondering, those homeowners in that targeted area, how are they made aware of this opportunity, or have they already been pre-selected, or how does that work?
As part of the pre-application process, we've had three meetings for homeowners, and they found out by two direct mailings from us to them, so everybody in the target area should have received a mailing from us explaining the program, excuse me, and then asking them if they're interested in being on an application waitlist. So, if the program is funded, then we'd be, you know, targeting the first people on the waitlist. So, as of, I think, last Friday, I think we have 23 households on the waitlist.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
It's exciting. Question, though, are there many matching funds that the city has to LA in a grant program like this?
The HRA will have some funding available. The amount isn't quite determined yet, but the HRA will have some revolving funds available to homeowners to loan. We also plan on working with Heartland Community Action, and then also MUC has a loan program. So, there's this different source, you know, we're just trying to, you know, and of course there's bank loans, that kind of thing, but probably between HRA loans, energy assistance, and Small Cities, that should probably take care of most of the homeowners.
And the city has no matching funds they have to put in for the, to secure those funds, correct?
Correct.
So, we are just, the city council's involved just as a step of local government to just be acknowledging the fact that you're submitting a grant?
You are the grantee, so that does make the city overall responsible for the grant, but the HRA will be administering it on your behalf.
All right, thank you.
Okay, it looks like we're ready to vote. And again, the recommendation is to submit the application for Small Cities Development Program, the pre-application, to be signed by the mayor to Minnesota Deed for commercial homeowner and rental rehab. I have this as a simple motion. Because it's money, does it need to be a roll call? Mr. Scott?
This is just to approve, applying for a grant. I think that can be done by motion.
Okay, a simple motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you for your work. Thank you for all you do for our community. And, Mr. Goodman, like Councilmember Schwantus said, nice to see another project back and looking forward to working with you, so.
Thank you very much.
Jill, thank you for all the good work that you do.
Thank you for everyone.
Next, we have a public hearing to set the 2017 General Obligation Street Improvement Financing Adopted Resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation improvement bonds. Mr. Okins.
Mayor, he's on vacation this week. I've asked our city attorney to address this, and I will assist as needed.
Okay. I just had it on my note that it was Mr. Okins, so.
Mayor, members of the council, this is, I believe, formalizing an action the council has already taken to finance a portion of the 2017 street improvement projects with the issuance of $1,100,000 in general obligation improvement bonds, Series 2017A. I believe all you need to do today is set a public hearing. You just need to set the public hearing.
And adopt a resolution.
And adopt a resolution.
So, what I have is that we have to have a motion to introduce the ordinance, and then I have that we have to do a resolution with a roll call to set the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce a motion to have a public hearing to take testimony on the ordinance authorizing the issuance of $1,100,000 general obligation improvement bonds, Series 2017A, and the levying of taxes to secure payment.
Motion made and seconded to set that hearing on November 20th at 7:02 PM. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
What we just did doesn't follow what's written on our sheet that we're supposed to be doing. It said it was two motions, one to introduce, and a resolution to set the...
I think what I heard from the city attorney is that we can do it in one motion.
We can do it in one?
Right. Because all we're doing is setting the hearing.
You can introduce the motion, you can, sorry, introduce the ordinance which is required to issue the bonds and set a public hearing on the bonds.
So, we're setting the public hearings, what we're doing.
Okay.
Official discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight i's, zero n's.
And that resolution passes. Next is Rice Memorial Hospital Propose Lease Discussion in Consideration of Setting Public Hearing to Convert...
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, but we need another resolution.
That's what I was trying to say. According to this, it had it in two separate ones. With two...
Under recommended motions.
Two exclamation marks by it.
Before we go by the...
Okay, so what do we just do?
Mr. Mayor, if you look at, can I combine them?
The car, the recommended motion, number one, that is the motion that was just presented, and so we now need to do the second motion under the recommended motions.
That's correct. Thank you. The second motion is to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of the geo-bonds, geo-improvement bond, Series 2017A.
So, moved.
Thank you. Motion's are made and seconded to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation improvement bond, Series 2017A. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight i's, zero n's.
And thank you to the council members that helped me through that stumble. As some of you know, I've got a little trouble seeing, and I missed that, so I apologize. Next is Rice Memorial Hospital Propose Lease Discussion in Consideration of Setting Public Hearing to Convert the City's Hospital Bonds to Qualified 501(c)(3) Bonds. Mr. Scott, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is an issue that was addressed by the city's bond council in the work session today, and the city will be considering entering into an operating lease with Carius Health and CentraCare for the Rice Hospital at its meeting on November 20th. Bond council, in reviewing the outstanding hospital bonds, has determined that those will need to be transferred into, or reclassified, I should say, as qualified 501(c)(3) bonds, due to the fact that, under the lease, a private nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation would be primarily charged with operating the hospital. In order to reclassify the bonds, a public hearing is necessary to consider the lease. The recommendation is that the city council set a public hearing for the November 20th regular city council meeting, and authorize that hearing be published.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set a public hearing for November 20th, 7:01 PM, to convert the city's hospital bonds to qualified 501(c)(3) bonds. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of the 2018-2019 Employee Health Insurance Program. I will let you know that we have some updated information on this, and so our city administrator will be handling that, but some of the actions that we were going to talk about and take tonight, I was not at the Labor Committee Meeting, or the Labor Meeting that was held last week, but I was briefed this afternoon, and my understanding is since that briefing this afternoon, there's been some changes. So, city administrator Holland.
Mayor and council, tonight we had planned to give a presentation and demonstrate two different health plans. And with that presentation, we would make a recommendation and show the pros and cons of those two different plans. Over the course of the last month, myself and our HR director, we have conducted over four, if not a half a dozen, different briefings. We've accepted numerous bids. We've done a lot of research, and we led to this two final bids for your consideration. But I was informed tonight, right before this meeting, that the alternate plan that we were considering cannot be considered under Minnesota state statutes. And this is advice I've taken from our city attorney. So, tonight, I'm not going to present two choices for your consideration. There will only be one choice, and that will be the continuation of the current health plan as we have it today. I will tell you that I've been administrating health plans for over 15 years. I've shifted plans probably half of those 15 years. I'm very familiar with getting the best plan for an organization and saving the city money, and at the same time, offering a more flexible plan to those employees. I'm disappointed that I won't be able to present that tonight. So, we're going to offer a continuation of the plan that will increase our costs, but not increase or enhance the plans to these employees or to their families. But, as is the case over the last eight years, we've seen a rising cost of health plans. So, tonight, that will be a continuation, you know, for the city. So, with that, I'm disappointed, but tonight, I feel like that you need to understand what we are obligating to the city. I did know about this plan increase that was given to us about six weeks ago, and so it was budgeted, so the city does have the finances to incur the additional cost. So, with that, I will tell you that we'll do a presentation, and then at that time, if you have additional questions, either our consultant, or HR director, or myself will answer and take your questions. And so, with that, I will turn it over to our HR director, and she'll introduce our consultant.
I just want, so really, we're not proposing any change, so all we're doing is saying we're going to keep our health insurance the same, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so then, is there a need for a presentation?
I feel that it's necessary, since there is an increase, and I feel like the council should be aware of what that increase is and what that costs. It won't be very long. If you'll bear with us, I think it should be less than five minutes.
I'd like to introduce Justin from the Flexible Benefit Consulting Incorporated. He will just give you a briefing on what the proposed increase is and what it's going to cost the city and the employees.
Thank you, Justin.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having me. I have two slides to go through. It's going to be very quick. So, here's the revised slides as of tonight. You can see here's our cost increase for 2000, excuse me, this is the overall cost increase from our renewal through the Southwest-West Central Service Cooperative. There's a 19% increase for 2018. All three plans will remain intact, just like we have today. Here's what it cost to the city. There's about a 17.2% increase cost to the city. Employees will also be seeing a cost out of their paychecks for their plan designs, except for the 12 singles that elect the HSA plan that's offered through the service That's what I have. What questions can I answer for you guys?
Well, it's disappointing to hear.
It is.
Very disappointing. I mean, you know, we were looking at a sizable savings to our taxpayers, and to have this last-minute snafu, or whatever you want to call it, is very disturbing. But, council, any comments from the council? Councilmember Nelson, followed by Christensen.
I would request that the council receive a written explanation as to why this happened. We were informed of the plans at the closed session. That was the first that we were informed of it, even though there were employee meetings that went on, and I'm not pointing at you for this. This is a general statement. And it was very difficult to decipher what was in the best interest of the city and what was in the best interest of the employees when we looked at the costs and what we were doing, and those things. We spent a lot of time and energy into making sure it was the right thing to do and the right to look at that, and that was the discussion that was supposed to take place. And so, if we did not do something so that we now can't have that conversation, I think this community, this, we as a council, have a responsibility to understand why this could not take place. And so, I am asking for some sort of written documentation as to why, and it was the 11th hour, why we are now faced with no choice.
Councilmember Christensen.
I almost forgot what I was going to say.
But I bet it was going to be good, right?
sold properly to the rest of them? I mean, it's, it's a terrific program, and I, I'm really, out of 100 and some employees, only 12 of them. I mean, it's a, it's a big advantage to be in the HSA program, and why is there only 12?
Bridget, do you?
I do not have an answer why there's only 12, only 12 signed up. I'm one of them.
Wow. Yeah, I was just curious. It's just because it's, and then they have no increases, as you can see.
Right.
Would you mind if I address that question?
Yeah, shoot, Justin.
Yeah, so my thought on this is, so I work with all public sector groups, and public sector, you know, we're creatures of habit. I mean, the reality is, you have a zero deductible plan, you have a $100 deductible plan, making a leap to a $2,600 deductible HSA, even with the funding, it's hard for folks to understand. Without the proper education, it's hard for them to leap there. Same thing with the P plan. Without, without education, you know, this was a big undertaking that we tried to implement, and, you know, we tried to give the education, but your folks have 30 years with just Blue Cross, with just these really, really good plans. We had high expectations that they would be able to, you know, understand and bite off on that kind of change. So I think we'll see, a lot of people migrate to that third plan this year. I think we'll see a lot of folks go to that plan, but I think part of that was the education that we did regarding the P plan. I think there was a lot of ahahs from that education. So I think when we're looking at this next year, it'll be a lot different.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I don't know if it should be addressed to you or Ike. I think we want to make, put something on the calendar, so we start educating early, so we're not in this predicament again. We know, we know what the problem is. I don't think we should be down this road again.
I will answer that, that there were some circumstances, that there's more to the story, but that we were handed certain things that were beyond our control during this whole process. And so, you know, normally, just like you put out street bids, and you do that in April, and you want to get them back by June, I put that on the calendar. I do that type of thing on a regular basis. This year, this was dropped on us at the last minute by the cooperative, and I'm not going to make any accusations as to the timing of that by them, but I will just say that we will be cognizant of that as we go forward. And every year, you can, you can bet your bottom dollar that I'm going to make sure that we bid it out. We're not going to go a decade with the same insurance policy, because at least you need to compare and contrast every year. So we're going to do that.
Well, that's what, that's what I want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you all.
And you were right, it was very brief. Thank you. Next is consideration of a resolution setting a public hearing for petition of easement, utility easement vacation for QuickTrip. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, the city received a petition for a utility easement vacation from QuickTrip. The property proposed for the vacation of the easement is the Wessarly 5 feet of Lot 2, Block 1, First Minnesota Edition. That's a piece of property that is part of the larger area being purchased by QuickTrip on South 1st Street. The planning commission has reviewed the request and adopted a resolution recommending the vacation. The next step in this process is for the council to conduct a public hearing. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt a resolution that sets a public hearing to consider the street vacation at their November 20th council meeting.
I'll move staff's recommendation. Mr. Mayor.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to set a public hearing for a petition of utility easement vacation for QuickTrip. Set the public hearing for November 20th. And now this, setting this public hearing, is a roll call?
It's a resolution?
No, it is.
It's a resolution.
Well, the resolution doesn't happen until we have the public hearing.
Believe, Mayor, members of the council, under the charter, when you are doing a street or utility vacation, you have to set the public hearing by resolution.
Roll call.
Councilmember Chuantas.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution does pass. Next is consideration of QuickTrip 945 preliminary, final plat. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, the city also received a plating application from QuickTrip for the First Street property. That property currently consists of multiple parcels that is being replatted into one single parcel to accommodate their proposed development. With the adjacent property already being in the process of being developed, there's some shared private easements and stormwater ponds that are going to be shared with the owners to the south. The city's receiving copies of all the easements and cross connections for the ponds and access. Because of the simplicity of this plat, we'd like to approve the preliminary and final in one fell swoop, so it's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt or approve the preliminary and final plat for QuickTrip 945.
So moved.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve QuickTrip 945 preliminary and final plat. Do we have a, do we have a map on where that's at?
I guess, other than what's in your, in your tablet, no. I guess that was not made available.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is consideration of a preliminary plat for Midwest Storage Edition. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, the city received a plat application from Myron Crouppa. This is the former Midwest Motors property and East Side Storage that is on East Highway 12. There are currently two existing parcels on that site that are being proposed to be platted into three for a commercial planned unit development. There is one existing drive on Highway 12, and MinDOT will grant no further access to the property because it is part of a controlled access highway section. That's the reason for the PUD. We're going to access all three of the parcels from one outlot, and that outlot will be a private drive, and there will be articles and declarations that spell out ownership, access, maintenance, et cetera. The planning commission has approved the preliminary plat, and it's a recommendation of staff that the council also approve the preliminary plat for Midwest Storage Edition on the east side.
So moved.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to consider the preliminary plat for Midwest Storage Edition. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. We had talked about having those up on the screen before so that the public can see it. I know we have it in our packets, but the council, I mean, the public doesn't see our packets, so.
I will talk to staff and find out why that was not loaded on a thumb drive. I've been gone a couple of days, and I mistakenly assumed it would.
Thank you. Appreciate that. It'd be nice if we could have that. Next, we have conclusion of the performance review for our city administrator, Mr. Holland. The document states that the mayor prepared this. The mayor didn't, as you know. It was prepared by Mr., or our councilmember Mesky, and so I will make that known that he is actually the one that did this, not me, so. Mr. Mesky.
If you'd like to do it next time, you certainly may. We did complete the six-month evaluation of city administrator Holland. We did use an evaluation form that used employed a rubric ranging 1 to 5 through unsatisfactory, through exceeds expectations. There were eight evaluation areas that were noted on the survey instrument, and I received seven of nine surveys back, which I then tabulated, and I can tell you that Mr. Holland is meeting or exceeding expectations in all aspects of his duties. The evaluation areas amongst the highest scores worth mentioning are community relations, leadership, and supervision. The council has agreed that Mr. Holland demonstrated high levels of honesty, integrity, and the performance of his duties in over the first six months with the city. The city council encourages and supports focused efforts by Mr. Holland in the next six months to ensure that information provided to the council by department directors is complete, accurate, and timely. The council is working to define some specific goals as we move towards the one-year evaluation, and we have also will be exploring the possibility of department share evaluations to be included in that part at the, at the one-year mark. And with that, we also discussed, as part of that six-month evaluation, a 3% salary increase, and so based on that, I guess I would make the motion that the council supports a satisfactory six-month performance review for city administrator Ike Holland and authorize a 3% salary increase.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to enter into a favorable performance review for city administrator Ike Holland for his first six months here, and to authorize a 3% salary adjustment. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, when does, when does the 3% kick in? Is it seventh month?
It's at the six-month rate. So when we, when it hits the six months, then it would become effective.
Okay. I've already, I've already hit six months. That's what I was going to say.
Mayor, members of the council, I think it's effective today, if this motion passes.
Correct. Right.
That's it.
Okay. I want to thank Mr. Holland for the work he's done. You know, it's, you came into a difficult time in our city, and you've helped us through some bumps. As we've seen tonight, we still have some bumps left, but we'll get through them. These are just little things that happen, and it's how you react to the bumps that chart the future. And our future's bright. We have got a lot of great things happening in the city, and, you know, I'm pleased with your leadership. I'm pleased with your openness and your willingness to meet with myself, and I know that one of the things the council wants to do is meet with you on a more regular basis, and I know you'll be doing that as well. And so I'm hoping that we all support this motion, and I believe Mr. Holland's doing a very good, a very nice job for us. So with that, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next is consideration to remove from the table the municipal development, creation of a new tax increment financing district. Does someone make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to remove the, to remove the First Street TIF project from the table.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. My understanding is that staff has prepared the answers to the, I'm sorry. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. My understanding is staff has prepared the questions that we asked, and Mr. Peterson, you're prepared to answer those questions?
That's true. Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, I will not go through the entire presentation with regard to the project again. As you will recall, the council did approve the geographic amendment of the municipal development district, so the framework has been established within which to create the TIF district as proposed. Following the last council meeting, staff followed up on the council concerns that were expressed, those being primarily the term of the district and potential return to the developer. There was also concerns expressed about site access, the layout of the drive-through lanes, and there was also some other minor concerns that we also followed up on that I will address. Since that time, I spoke with the developer. I spoke with the developer's attorney and the financial people. The message that I received was that the project finances were thin and that there was really no room to adjust the term of the district. Staff has reviewed the finances, and we concur. For this project to be successful, even in its barest form, requires the minimum 15-year tax increment financing plan that was given preliminary approval by the council in May. We took a look at the site plans again. We looked at the access issues. We looked at the drive-through, and we remain convinced that the site will function efficiently. It will function safely. We, at the staff level, we think it's an exciting project for a site that is heavily encumbered by unavoidable redevelopment costs, and TIF is the only way to logically develop your way out of that situation. You know, there was also some discussion about the TIF assistance being a business subsidy. There was some confusion on that matter. Further research into that has yielded the opinion that, under Minnesota statutes, this particular project is not a business subsidy because the cost to acquire and prepare the site exceeds 70% of the assessor's estimated market value, and that is a direct exception from the business subsidy requirements in Minnesota statute. I'd be happy to answer any questions in the course of development, but I'd just like to recommend once again approval of this redevelopment TIF district for a term of 15 years.
Okay, we took this item off the table. We did have a motion and a second. There were some additional questions that we wanted staff to answer. Staff has answered those questions. Counselor, additional questions or comments? Councilmember Mesky, followed by Christensen.
Chris, could you give the values of what has been used on developing those lots that demonstrates that 70%?
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, we did very simple math. The estimated market value of the property at this time, and that's buried in all your attachments from Ellers and Associates, but I believe that the property has an estimated market value of somewhere around $400,000 at this point, and that's because there are no properties, or there are no buildings left on that. They're undeveloped properties. So the cost to acquire that includes the previous cost of demolition, and the site preparation cost to prepare it for development are probably triple to quadruple what the actual estimated market value is by the county assessor. It's a significant encumbrance on that property.
And a follow-up, and I know that we have someone who can answer a question, but there were some questions that were raised last time about the large number of vacancy, vacant lots, or vacant properties in the city of Wilmer, and so why would we offer a TIF district to create perhaps additional vacant lots? I know there's an answer for it, and I was wondering if maybe it could, if it's not from you, if it can be from the developer himself to answer some of that questions?
I'd be glad to give that answer because on a daily and weekly basis, we deal with those issues. Not every property is suitable for every use, and we've got a number of properties in town that were developed for a specific use. That use no longer exists, and the sites are not very easily adaptable to other uses. So you're always going to have demand for properties, for new properties, that can specifically meet the demands of the businesses that are looking for those sites.
So you're confident that we will not have vacant lots in this development, or vacant spots?
That is always a function of the developer's ability to market and fill those spaces. I would offer no such guarantee, but I would think in a situation like this, when he's able to reach out and specifically build for the tenants, do the tenant build outs to suit their needs, the entire site is large enough to accommodate a wide variety of business types from a parking and access standpoint.
Mr. Graves, do you wish to address that question? Okay, we're good right now. Thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Once again, government, at all levels, is not, we shouldn't be picking winners and losers, and that's what we're doing here with this, with TIF districts and tax abatement. We're not here to guarantee profitable business. We're not supposed to be doing that, but that's what they're asking for. To be profitable, we need to have this TIF district, and that's not why we're here. Also, there's, they would have an unfair advantage of leasing any space out over there, over all the existing empty spaces available in Wilmer, of which I've got a list of some of them. I've had three or four calls from concerned individuals that own these properties, and they're trying to rent them presently, and they can't, and by serving a TIF district to this particular project, they would have the advantage of being able to lower their the advantage of being able to lower their per-square-foot cost because they wouldn't have to pay the value of the improvements over the next 15 years. Here's just a few that are looking to rent in Wilmer. The Best Buy, the place next to the mattress factory, North American State Bank Building is renting right now. Behind Grisly Restaurant, there's a building with some offices for rent. Fenster Realty has offices or space for rent in their building. Ruff CPA Accountants has space available for rent. Skylark Mall, Anderson Law Building, building behind the CCS thrift store, Olson Building. Let's see, the new Candy Mall has space, space behind the Verizon Building in Candy Mall. Former Pizza Hut is empty. The All-Star Realty Building is looking for renters. The Wyberg Building, which is the -- was Dr. Mattson's old office near the bridge. The Strip Mall just north of the Sound Image. Man, I drove by there, must have been Friday, and there's like four or five empty spaces there for rent. Wilmer Life Sciences, they've got places for rent out there in North Highway 71. And the LaFont Building on North Highway 71, across from Robbins Island, West Central Trophy right next to them, they have a place. They're trying to rent also. So all these empty spaces in Wilmer for rent, they have to pay taxes on the value, the current value of their property. And then this new project would be able to lower their rent because they won't have to pay the tax value of what they're improving that property by for the next 15 years. It just isn't right, folks. We need to put a stop to government choosing winners and losers. We're not here to do that. I speak against this project, and I think several in the council have had phone calls also from these same people. Mr. Cedarstrom's building also. He's the one that spoke to us at the last meeting. He's trying to rent that front half of that building for two, three years, and he's paying, what did he say, $27,000 or $37,000 a year in property tax? We're not here to give an unfair advantage to business. We need to stay out of that business. So I would speak against the motion.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to hear from the developer. I have a question for the developer, but so if he could come up, that would be great. But while he does that, I guess I've done some contemplation and some speaking around because I have a local area business, and we have retail space. And I'm certainly not -- I'm not in favor of giving taxpayer dollars away. And I'm confident that this program does not do that because the state legislature is taking great measure to ensure that these types of programs specifically don't do that, don't take money out of the taxpayers' hands and give it to somebody else. This is simply a mechanism in which business can be fostered and new development can thrive. I would like to hear from the developer specifically regarding your efforts, going back to the beginning of this project, your efforts. A lot of discussion was had, you know, regarding all the available rental space in town. Have you made efforts regarding some of those other spaces? And if you have, why this space? If you could speak on that, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. And thank you, Councilman Christensen. I think you bring up some valid points, and I think that those are definitely things to consider in this. Because like I said in the beginning in the open forum, this is something that comes with a lot of questions. There's a lot of education that goes behind this. And there's a lot of things that people have to know to understand the full grasp of the project. So I think it makes sense for me to give a little background about what I do so that it can explain how we kind of got to the point that we're currently at. So I currently manage nine different states of real estate, over 110 different properties. And I know the ins and outs of 110 different cities. I know that what we look for for retail, I know what other people look for in retail, and what those things are when they consider to come to a market. I can tell you that we've had the local Domino's Pizza in town for almost 35 years. This was the first store that we had before we grew our organization. And we've been on 501 Litchfield Avenue for that whole time. And so it's always been a dream of ours to move to First Street. As a small business owner, your dream is to move onto First Street to help your business because First Street has kind of become that pinnacle area where you do business, and that's where you thrive. You always kind of almost achieve that greatness if you can move to First Street for most businesses. Now, it doesn't make sense for everyone to go there. But for most businesses, that's a huge step when you can move that. And we've allowed a lot of people, and we've pulled a lot of businesses onto First Street through helping them. We're a part of Wilmer 10, which owns a lot of property on First Street. So we've been able to see a lot of small businesses grow when they've come and done that. Over the past several months and years, we've been looking at different properties along First Street and how we can move there. Like I said, we've had our spot for 35 years. So we've had to look at what are the places that are available? Where can we move? Being a part of Wilmer 10, we've had multiple opportunities of different businesses that we could go into. There's been different vacancies. We've had 1,400 square-foot spots. We've had 1,200 square-foot spots. We've had things that have been, had great visibility. We've had things that haven't been great visibility. We've looked at all those, and none of those suited the needs for what we wanted. We currently own the property that's kitty-cornered to the subject property we're talking about with the Verizon. We considered multiple times moving into there. There's also properties where I came on two years ago that said, you know, I think we should take a look at the different properties that are on First Street. Because, Mr. Christensen, I agree with you. I said, there's properties on First Street. Let's backfill those. Let's make sure that those things are getting filled first before we develop anything new on First Street and incur those costs of building something new. So I can tell you up here today, and I won't get into all the details, that we did pursue property at the Candy Mall. And we were turned down for those. And we did go in there with the qualifying price, and we went in there with options to rent. And we were turned away from that opportunity. So we looked at other opportunities. And keep in mind, when we're going through different opportunities of spaces on First Street, as a retailer, you look at many different things. You look at what's the size of the spot? How easy is the spot to get in and out for our customers? What's the visibility look like? What's the signage look like? There's more spots and more things you look at than rather just saying, is there an opening? Can I put a business there? Especially if you want to be there for the long term. And price is one factor as well. We moved down the road, and as you know, there was an opportunity to backfill a space that had the laundromat in it over by Taco John's. And we were pursuing that. We were going to backfill that space. Unfortunately, circumstances came up where that fell through, and that wasn't something that we were able to do. Now, we were able to move someone else there and free up a spot down the street for a business to expand. But I say all this to say, we've been pursuing property on First Street that's vacant. And we've done our due diligence there. Now, on the flip side, I also work as a developer. And with that, I try to bring brands to town that will help the city grow, produce jobs, and produce tax dollars. And I come from this town. I was born and raised here. So I want nothing more than to see Wilmer thrive. I think that that's for everybody's best interest. When we get new brands, new businesses, when we see businesses move into better locations, that's good for the city. That's really good. It shows that there's growth here. It shows that businesses are opening. They're thriving. And that's what brings people here. And so I've talked to many different retailers that have wanted to come to town. And they express the same interests that I speak now, that there's not spots on First Street that are suitable for their needs. And that's how we got to the point of saying, you know what? We need to develop something so we can bring those retailers here to town. And so we looked at a lot of different land. And we got to the point where we said, you know, we think that this is a property, the subject property we're talking about, that can really thrive, really grow, and really spur development on the north half of First Street. We're seeing a big flourishing on the south half of First Street with the Quick Trip, the Dairy Queen, the Hobby Lobby. South First Street has been growing. But why hasn't North First Street been growing? And you look at it, and it's because there's properties that are already -- there's stuff already on those properties. And in order to tear those properties down and make it raw land, it's expensive. And you've got to start with raw land so you can move forward so that the developer can at least make money because developers aren't in it for charity, unfortunately. They're in it to make a profit, but they're also in it to help the community. And so we approached the seller about the property. Unfortunately, the property price was too high. We went. Luckily, we were good friends with the property owner, and so we tried to bring that price down. And still, at that point, the property was too expensive in order to get it back to green space. This all was happening back in April. And so I say this to -- this isn't something we pulled together in the past three weeks and said, let's bring this before the council. We've been working very diligently with Ellers, with Bruce, with Aaron, with our attorney, with the construction owner, with many different people to make sure that this really does survive and thrive. And we're coming to you as a last resort. Because in order for this project to get going, and in order for this project to thrive and get off the ground, it needs your help. And it needs your help in the tax increment financing to get it back to level playing field with raw land on First Street. Because the property owner took those buildings down as a good deed for the city because they want to do good for the city. And by doing that, it brought the land price too high. And so we need to get it down to a point where, moving forward, this project can survive, and this project can thrive and can bring new businesses into town. So we can move our store onto First Street and have that be a good place to produce more jobs, to produce more tax dollars. And furthermore, this is never going to guarantee a profit. Tax increment financing has never been put in place to guarantee anybody a profit. It's to help get the land back to a green space so that it can be developed. And nowhere in our contract, nowhere in anything that we have been told, have we ever been told, you will be guaranteed a profit. That's part of the risk that goes involved in doing this. And so over 15 years, there might not be an increase in the property tax dollars that are given back to the city. But if new businesses open, if jobs are produced, if development is had on the north part of First Street, how much benefit and how much tax dollars does that bring to the community versus not having that? And I think that's the most impactful thing to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Follow-up? Councilmember Christiansen?
I know you were pointing over here. I'm just looking at your weak eye.
I'm not weak, actually. Remember, I said that earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Thousand Degree Pizza just renovated a place. We have many other pizza places in town. We have lots of fast food restaurants in town. And this is, we're talking about Domino's here. And it isn't Domino's Pizza anymore. It's Domino's because they serve all kinds of food. We can't -- how do you think these other fast food restaurants feel? We're going to give them a foot up or a leg up. And he mentioned that he's not sure they're going to be profitable. But we heard Mr. Peterson say two weeks ago that, or three weeks ago, I guess it was, that the BUT-4 test says they can't do it, that it can't be profitable unless they get the TIF district. I'm in business, and I know a little bit about fast food restaurants. And I've never seen one get a TIF, be part of a TIF district or get tax abatement. I just think it's very unfair to the other fast food restaurants and these places that are looking to rent to give an unfair advantage to somebody just because the demolition costs were so much. I mean, look at Quick Trip is going through, demoing one on East End of Wilmer and some demo over here on the south end of the town. They never came for tax abatement or TIF district. They're going to go downtown, and they're going to have to do some demolition at the Old Mills Building. Those costs are put in place as a cost to doing business. Again, I just, I don't like the city choosing winners and losers, and I think it's bad for us to do that. And all the owners of these buildings think the same way. And they all pay property taxes in Wilmer, property taxes on an empty portion of their building that they're trying to rent. And we don't give them any slack because of that. I mean, they pay the full amount, as Mr. Cedarstrom stated to us three weeks ago also. That property is going to be developed, and I suspect soon, without a TIF district or tax abatement. It's prime property. If you have to have government subsidy or TIF district or tax abatement, we're just giving an unfair advantage to that piece of property that shouldn't be.
Councilmember Meskey.
Mr. Graves, you heard me bring it up already, but I'm assuming since you're developing this, that you probably have some potential investors that are there because you're going to make it conforming to where it would be much more desirable to move into these lots versus any other vacant lots. So I know you won't give me a guarantee. I saw that. But are you confident that you're going to be able to fill these specific lots within the timeframe of the TIF district at worst? I'm hoping that you're going to give me an answer that compels me with a shorter window of time.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, no. Great question, Councilman Meskey. You know, I think it's valid to say that there's businesses that are coming to town right now that there was vacant spots, as Councilman Christensen brought up, that did not backfill those. There's an outlaw being built in front of the mall, as we all know right now, that is being backfilled by an Aspen Dental and a Starbucks. So I ask if there's so much on First Street, why were those not backfilled by those businesses? I will never guarantee that something will be filled up because nothing in life is guaranteed, much like a profit is never guaranteed. But I will say that I do feel very confident that those spaces will be backfilled in a very short amount of time. And we've spoke with many different businesses that are here and that are not here, that are very interested in moving into that space. So I feel very confident that that will be done in a short period of time.
Mr. Peterson.
Members of the council, I'd like to throw out a couple additional comments. BUT-4 test for this particular project was not premised on any degree of profit. It was a simple statement that the property is not likely to be developed without the use of tax increment financing. If you look at the current real estate market for bare property, bare commercial property in Wilmer, it's not selling quickly. And when it is selling, it's selling at a price per square foot that's considerably less than this developer has invested in it. And you might say, why is that anyone's problem but the developer or the current property owner, I should say? It boils back to the fact that we had substandard properties that were removed from that site, that were a blighting influence on the city, and tax increment financing is being used to cover the additional costs of the redevelopment and the elimination of the blight. It's not about business types, selecting business types. The TIF isn't going for a particular business. It's going to the site for redevelopment purposes. And I think that's extremely important to remember. And if you stifle new development, that does not in any way stimulate the backfilling of those existing properties. Each of the existing properties was constructed with its own limitations, and sometimes it takes the owners a while to realize that. But they're constructed for single purposes, and they do not always adapt very well to reuse. And that's why we have those available spaces. Over time, I'm confident they will be filled. But I think this needs to be treated as a completely separate issue because it's redevelopment of half a block in the city of Wilmer. And it's going to not only stimulate development on the north half of First Street, but it's also close to the central business district, and it will have the spillover effect into the CBD as well.
Thank you. You know, when I take a look at this project, and I ask myself, if there were a gas station that was closed, if there were three houses with weeds halfway up the side of the house, we had another commercial building that was not occupied and empty, and we had a multifamily house where the paint was peeling off of it, the doors were sideways off the house, you had cars parked in front of it, the yard was all tore up by vehicles driving across it, not using the parking lot or the driveway, would this be a question? Would we say that we want to clean up that blighted area? So should we penalize a developer that said, we want First Street to look good? We want First Street to be an attractive area. And so we're going to take the expense, take that out on our own dime, not come to the city and ask for the dime, but take it out on our own dime, put it into grass, mow it, keep it regularly maintained, and make it look good coming into our community. We'd be clamoring over each other to make these motions to get this project passed. So let's take a look at East Highway 12. Who remembers Highway 12 Motel? Who remembers Highway 12 Motel? Highway 12 Motel was a blighted property. The same business that's coming to you today, asking to have a TIF district on First Street, took that motel, razed that motel, took that motel down, made it so that that part of town coming in on the east side was not a blighted area. Did they come and ask us for tax increment financing at that time? No, they didn't. When they removed a home over there, did they come and ask us? Give us some assistance? No. We have a special need, a special circumstance, in the way that the developer is telling us, our city planner and planning development department has told us the only way this project's going to go is if you give TIF. Folks, we got to look at how we want this community to be portrayed. A number of us said that we wanted to sign Wilmer's Open for Business back hanging out in front of our business, back hanging out in front of City Hall. Folks, this is a test. Is Wilmer open for business, or isn't it? Do we want new development, or don't we? And as far as backfilling, how many empty homes are in Wilmer? But yet, new homes are built every day. There's developers all the time building new homes, but there's empty homes. There's homes in foreclosure. Now, they're not asking for tax increment financing, they're not asking for reductions, but the same goes into effect. I want to have my business in a certain location, because I have done the analytics that says, in order for my business to be successful, this is where I need to be. And I'm not a business owner, but I rely on people that are at business owners that say, I need to be in a certain location, and this is why I want to be there. So, as the mayor, I would like you to consider that. Consider all those facts, not just that we have empty properties on First Street. Some of those areas probably don't meet the needs of the developer that's coming to us saying they want to do a new development. And my final statement is, in 15 years, if that lot remains empty for 15 years, and we come and we say to ourselves, you know what, we could have had a building sitting here for 15 years, we could have had those jobs, we could have had that income, we could have had the new homes sold, we could have had current homes that are sitting unoccupied, occupied, we could have had all that, but now we're still sitting here with an empty lot, because we wouldn't approve tax increment financing for this project. The east side of the street also needs to be redeveloped. There's people that will be looking at what we do tonight, as to whether they want to take and take that property down and develop there as well. Similar circumstances. Additional comments from the council? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've asked a lot of questions. You've advocated for this particular TIF district, this developer. Without passing the gavel, I mean, that's supposed to be done. However, how about, why don't we ask questions about these guys? Here's my fear. I'm sure that what they're going to put over there is going to be fabulous, it's going to enhance First Street, there's no doubt about it. They're going to have spaces for rent there. And some of those people renting might just leave these buildings and go over to that place, because they can rent it for less, it's brand new, it's in a better location. What are we saying to those people, if that happens? I understand the plight of these people not having their buildings rented out in Wilmer, Minnesota. I understand it fully. Believe me, I got some lots out here that I'm sitting on, and I'm paying property taxes on every year also. We took that risk. But someone that's already renting in Wilmer may take their business and move over to this new area on First Street, because it costs less, and they're in a better location. We're just taking out of one pocket and putting in another. Once again, we're giving them an advantage that none of these other businesses have had.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Graves for being here tonight and explaining the project. I know that Domino's might be the main tenant, or one of the tenants in there, but I do believe that you're looking at bringing additional businesses into the community. And so, while I'm concerned about other properties that are for rent, I do believe bringing additional business to town might help to bring other business to town that will fit into these. I see Mr. Backman in the back, I'm wondering if you have any comments that you would like to make, or Mr. Fenster, if there's any comments you would like to make about rental properties? I also just have a real concern of some of the message that we're, if we truly understand the TIF, that it's how it operates, how it, and so I would like someone to just speak to that a little bit, too, so.
Mr. Peterson, can you speak to TIF, please?
Mayor Kell, members of the council, quite simply, tax increment financing takes the increased taxes generated by a project and makes those taxes available back to a developer to cover the costs of certain development activities that are deemed to be public purpose. And public purpose costs include acquisition, and includes site preparation, and includes storm drainage, and includes lighting. There's a variety of uses that are deemed to be public purpose. In this particular case, it's the acquisition and the site preparation and the utility extensions that will more than offset the amount of TIF that's available to this project. It's a very simple concept, and in this particular case, we can go into it with fairly good assurances of what we're going to receive for values for the new buildings. That's all been vetted through the assessor's office, as well as through the developer himself. So we know that those are very accurate numbers that we're dealing with. One thing that's been said over and over is that there will, that this developer will be able to offer decreased rents because of the use of tax increment financing. I don't see how that's possible, because the tax increment financing is only being used to cover those costs to level the playing field and make this the same price as the vacant property that the other businesses were built on. So, there really isn't an objective way of looking at this and seeing that there's any possible way to reduce rents because of the TIF.
Mr. Fenster.
Douglas Fenster, from 2400 Country Club Drive. I'm a commercial real estate broker, and have marketed many of the properties that you speak of, not only those that are in play here for this particular development, but also those that are empty. I would like to remind you that the property to the east is also included in the, in the TIF district, and this is going to be an expensive, I've had and have marketed this property and both these properties for well over a year and a half to two years. And the expense, particularly to the property to the east, to develop and to make it a level playing field, is going to be extremely expensive. And so, it would really help that property, and this property has already gone through the expense of the development costs to make it eligible. Secondly, the, there is no real competitive edge that will be given to this developer. All of the properties that are eligible now in South Wilmer, Candy Plaza, the, all of the ones that you mentioned, these are renting for a much lower value, probably, than this developer will be asking for his base costs. The base costs have to be covered by the cost of building and the cost of the land. This project will probably be, probably in the neighborhood of, what, 2.5 million or something like that? And I can guarantee you that the cash flow will not work on $11.50 a foot. The properties and the marketing that I've done for all of those properties in South Wilmer have obstacles. They have parking obstacles, they've got ingress egress obstacles, they have signage obstacles, they have size obstacles. People that come to me on a daily basis, monthly basis, and I deal with national companies, I deal with a lot of local people, a lot of accountants, business people that are looking to expand, attorneys, accountants. They find that these spaces have their limitations that are available. They're available, yes they are, and they've been available for some time. But either the size of their operations don't fit, the parking doesn't work, they have too many employees, and they just cannot fit into those places that are available right now. So there are physical reasons for those to be empty. They will eventually be filled. The other advantage here with this, if the tax increment financing is eligible and passed, is that it will allow some of the local people to participate on First Street. Right now, you have a lot of the larger nationals, the Advanced Auto, the Auto Zone, which just replays their next door behind accessories for trucks. That's a little bit different playing field as well. Quick Trip is a different playing field as well. You're talking about multinational, international conglomerates. A lot of these developments that I've actually worked on are reintroduced as REITs. Auto Zone, Advanced Auto, and Hobby, I'm not so sure about Hobby Lobby, but they're, they're built with the intentions of being resold and then marketed on the, on the stock exchange. So, those, those types of developers are in a different, different playing field. So, I would, I would say that this specific TIF district that's been designated is a, is a good district, it's very necessary, it takes care of that east property, which is going to be needed to enhance people to come in and spend the money that they need to spend. The development costs are extremely high. I was involved with this project that is in question here, and to take those buildings down, to cover all of the asbestos mitigation, to take care of all of the environmental issues that we're taking care of with, with the gas station and so forth, you're going to have to have that on the east side as well, and they were very, very high. And that is why it's been very hard to market it, so.
Questions?
Yeah, do you have an interest in that property? I mean, did you sell it?
Actually, I did. I sold it, I sold some of, some of the property.
I find it interesting that you're advocating for this when you have that interest in there. You stated there was, these other places have obstacles. Well, you're giving them another one by putting this property there.
That's your opinion, John.
I know it is, but the, the public needs to know that you had an interest in this property. I could see you advocating for it because of that. I mean, it just...
And you own restaurants, is that what you said earlier?
What does that have to do with it?
What does that have to do with what Mr. Fenster has just said?
Point of order. Point of order.
Any other questions?
I'm going to make a motion to adopt the resolution for approval of tax increment financing plan for the proposed Legacy on First project.
Second. Okay, we had a motion table, motion one.
You had a motion brought off the table.
Yeah, we had it off the table.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when you passed the motion to remove this item from the table, that would have reinstated the previous motion that would have been made at the previous council meeting. So the motion's already been made and seconded.
Okay, well, then I'll call the question.
Motion's been made and seconded, call the question. All those in favor of the motion, call the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Roll call for the new tax increment financing district, as we've been discussed, discussing.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Oh.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That motion does carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a project that's being brought forward from the, from our work session that we didn't get to. So Chief Velt, if you could talk to us about the canine project, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Holland.
No, I was just going to introduce him, Mayor. I just, I had a conversation with the chief here in the Southern last week. He'd been talking to me over a month about this project, and we've, we've put together some information, and I think it's very helpful for everyone to understand, especially the financing on this, it's been very creative, and I think the need for the animals is not in question. And I will also say that anybody that's watched the demonstrations this summer, as I did, and the professionalism that the officers bring with the dog program are second to none. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief, and he can make his formal request. And the reason that I put it on tonight is there is, again, another timeline, unfortunately, that we have to meet if we're going to get a dog within this next fiscal year. So with that, chief?
Thank you, Mr. Holland, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. First of all, thank you for allowing this on the council agenda tonight. The item before you for consideration is to request authorization for the Wilmer Police Department to purchase and implement a second canine unit within our agency. The item's being brought before the council, as it involves an ongoing strategic purchase for the department and necessarily due to the initial purchase cost. We would look to purchase the second canine using funds from the Wilmer Police Department Drug Forfeiture Account. In essence, canine Axel is paying for his own partner, if you allow it. These funds would not be from the city of Wilmer budget, would fit Minnesota statute for drug forfeiture funds to be used in counter-drug programs. The estimated cost of purchasing additional canine is $9,000 for the dog. Narcotics enforcement continues to be an area which requires focused efforts and resources in our community. After discussions with the Wilmer Police Department Command Staff and officers, we feel that the addition of a second canine unit to Wilmer PD would provide for greater coverage, limit overtime and potential burnout, allow more utilization of a canine, enhance training, and provide for greater officer safety. The canine company, which has been used to purchase and train canine Axel, are making their purchases from a breeder in December and will start training in January 2018. This will allow a second canine unit to be trained and available by spring 2018. Other training and operating costs have been incorporated into 2018 Wilmer PD budget request and would not directly affect any other Wilmer PD needs. We appreciate your consideration, and I'd stand for any questions.
I'll move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of staff to add an additional canine to the Wilmer Police Department. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're on the canine, you have contests going on.
Thank you for mentioning that.
And I voted, and tomorrow, I think, is the last day.
It is.
If you want to give the info...
I'll give my sales pitch right now again. Yes, thank you. The Wilmer Police Department is involved in a canine contest through a company called Aftermath. It's aftermath.com. It's a crime scene cleanup company, they garner votes. You can vote daily for the Wilmer Police Department canine program. The top five programs that are voted on will receive different dollar amount grants or awards for that. And the last day to vote is tomorrow, so you can vote today, and then vote again tomorrow for it.
Do you have the website?
Yeah, if you go to aftermath.com, there's a spot to click on canine, and at the bottom of the page, select Wilmer PD, enter your name and email address, and your vote is counted.
There was a lot of communities on there.
It's a tough contest this year. We haven't received exactly where we're at, but we know we've received over 1,000 votes, along with about maybe other 40 other departments, so we're hoping to be number one, but...
Good luck.
Thanks.
Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution does pass.
Thank you.
Tell them to travel safe, and we look forward to the enforced enhancement.
Thank you.
Your department does a great job, and you're always at the top of everybody's lists and prayer lists as well. I know that that's really needed, particularly in today's day, with the events that happened yesterday and all of that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Just a reminder, we have an additional public hearing for the Rice Hospital project with Center Care and ACMC. It will be held Tuesday, November 14th, at 7:00 PM at Health and Human Services, the lower level, at the Candy Lake County Health and Human Services Building. With that, city administrator comments.
I thought for a minute you'd skipped over me, Mayor. Shouldn't have doubted you. I have one announcement, and that is concerns to the meetings, you know, we're going to have that meeting, as you stated, on the 14th. I would ask that we also keep in mind the 27th. I know that's after Thanksgiving, but I, I'm not requesting... I know that's after Thanksgiving, but I'm not requesting that date tonight, but if you would keep that Monday open. We are meeting, obviously, on the 20th, and then again, you know, we have our regular meetings in December. I am, just so you know, I am trying to organize these and so that we don't overload the meetings. But, you know, just last week, we were not certain about the hospital or where it was going to go. We didn't know that. And so once it passed, it set into motion a lot of different things. And so I'm going to be sincere in our efforts here, especially over the holidays, to be considerate of everyone's time and try to keep our meetings organized as much as possible. But I will tell you that we still have labor negotiations to go through. We still need to have some discussions about the budget as we end this year. I will tell you that some people are looking to change job and position descriptions, our favorite. And so I'm going to talk to the, you know, we have our evaluations, all the evaluations need to be done in the entire city in the month of December. So we've got a lot on our plate here in this last 60 days. And so, again, I just want you to know that we will not deliberately try to overload anything. And again, I also want to reiterate and repeat what the chief said. Thank you to the mayor and to the council for allowing that K-9 to be added to the agenda. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Are you saying the 27th, we will have a meeting then?
I would just, if you'd just put that as tentative, I don't want to say right now.
Like at 5:00, or what do you mean?
It would be a 5:00 meeting, yes.
I really don't have any comments. Councilmember Nelson?
I'll take my comments and ask the city engineer to give us an update on the street improvements and where we're at with the lovely weather that we've had.
As the council, Councilmember Nelson, of the projects that were going on this year, the only project remaining to be completed is the 16th-17th Street project. And I've been gone for about 10 days, so I haven't checked on it today. But as I left, they were, my understanding was that they were nearing completion, at least of the first lift of bituminous asphalt. And then, of course, next spring, we will complete that project.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Just a reminder that this week at the Wilmer City Auditorium, Mr. John Lindstrom, Lindstrom, is it? Will have his military, on display, military...
Memorabilia.
Memorabilia, thank you. And he has a program on Saturday night, the 11th, at 7:30 p.m. for Veterans Day. Very appropriate to be held on the 11th. So if you can attend, please come out. I know he has school buses coming there and kids during the daytime, but if you can attend the program on Saturday evening, it would be appreciated. He usually gets good attendance, and it's good to remember our veterans, too.
Councilmember Schwantis?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado?
I had the opportunity to go down to Mankato and attend one of their city council meetings. And it was because of our project I was involved in. And I think we should think about doing what Mankato does as far as a calendar. They open it up to John Q. Public to submit a picture of the city of Mankato. They pick three finalists, and then they have runners-up, and then they make an electronic calendar for the city website. So those people are recognized, the top three, top three are recognized, and then the others are named by the month. There's no financial thing, it's just recognition. The other thing that's a little more, probably a little more aggressive that the city of Mankato does is they have art on the street, and they put it at different spots around the community, and they request art from all over the country. And then they have the people vote on a piece, and then the art council or whatever buys that piece and displays it. It's pretty cool. I think this year was, they had a sculpture, it was xylophone with a maestro, and that thing was occupied by somebody. Every time I was in Mankato, I wasn't there a lot, but when I was there, they were using it. The kids were using it. They got a Godzilla, they've got all kinds of different things displayed. So it just enhances the community and gives it a nice vibe. So I would encourage maybe thinking about doing a calendar for our city by the John Q. Public. I'm not from Mankato, obviously, and I did all right down there. And then, so yeah, so that's my two cents. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Mesky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, we're not going to be opening up a new grade school, Lakeland Grade School on Lakeland Drive, and Lakeland Drive is a pretty level and smooth racetrack now. And there is a crosswalk that does have pedestrian lights. I haven't seen them work yet, but we're going to have to pay attention. When they're on, that means somebody's going to be crossing it, and it's going to be a lot of kids, so we have to pay attention.
Thank you, good point. Anything else to come for the order?